All right, I'd like to call the, what day is it? The May 21st, 2018, the meeting of Mount Vernon City Council order. I will be sitting here in the middle since Jamie's business conference tonight. Do my best to do things the way you would like them to be done. So, first item, second item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I would move approval of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Communications unscheduled. Is there anyone here attending tonight that wants to come up and talk to council about something not on the agenda? Joe, come up and introduce yourself, would you?
We're on the agenda as well, but I'm going to talk about something not on the agenda. So, my name is Joe Jensen. I'm the Director of Main Street and Marketing for the Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Development Group. And I wanted to just kind of get you up to speed on some things we've been doing this spring and as we gear up for events for the summer. So, the Smithsonian exhibit is now gone, packed up, it has left our community. It's in a town where I might have saw it this weekend. I was doing the final reports for the Smithsonian and I just wanted to go over some facts that we gathered, some data. About 4,000 people visited the exhibit, actually went through the exhibit during its six weeks here. And these included representatives from 56 Iowa counties, 31 states, and 26 countries on six continents. And you couldn't believe those little pinpricks that are going in the maps that we had up there. There were several stories in the newspaper, TV programs, both General 90 and General 2 covered it. And then we had some really good response on social media. And Iowa Public Radio did a really great, great broadcast. I heard from several people all over the state that had heard of it and come to see it. So, there were 10 workshops and lectures associated with this, several school tours. There was a special project with the Mount Vernon High School, J-Term. We did previews at festivals throughout the year. There was a oral history project, a film event, and two fundraisers that helped bring attention to the event and the county in all total. The estimated reach of the exhibit, when we added all the supporting events and all the things that happened before and after, using the data given to me by the Smithsonian, we think that 8,790 people were affected by the exhibit in some way. So, we collaborated with well over 20 quarter area groups to install these exhibits. African American Museum, Cornell College, Dan Gable Wrestling Museum, East Buchanan Marching Band. The list goes on and on and on. And then in addition to grants, there were probably $68,200 in in-kind support from speakers. We had some printing done for us. And then local businesses, including First Street Community Center, Polly and Bob, and everyone involved in the exhibit's case much of their time. In all, there were 50 volunteers that contributed more than 2,400 hours. And the entire project from start to finish took a volunteer committee, 12 of 12, more than four years, from the start till it was torn down. So, there were 150 surveys taken of attendees at the exhibit. These were the adults. And all 150 of these, and there were many more that went through, but 150 chose to fill out the surveys. They all answered yes to the question whether they would recommend this exhibit to a friend. We also had 25 children do surveys and almost all of whom said that, except for a few 14-year-olds who said, "Sports are stupid." I thought that was funny. So, anyway, so that was good. Chocolate Strolls coming up June 2nd, June 24th. We've got Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Day at the ballpark. So, I think that's it, but I'll talk to you a little later anyway. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else not scheduled to speak here? Very good. And then next, we have Emily here to speak with us from Alliance. Emily, looks like you have a little piece of paper to accompany your presentation.
Yes, so I'm Emily Uppa. I am the city's key account manager for Alliant Energy. So essentially, what that means is I am the city's key resource here at Alliant Energy. So, when you guys have any issues, I always encourage Chris to reach out to me and let me know when those do come up so we can really work to be that good community partner within your community and help you guys get those resolved in a timely manner and in a way that's really sufficient for all. So, every year, part of what we do is a community annual partnership assessment, which I have laid at each of your spots prior to the meeting. So, what this essentially says is the investment of dollars going back into your community from Alliant Energy. So, some of the exciting things that we get to help with on include community support, community development. And a lot of that support comes from our corporate contributions or Alliant Energy Foundation. So, over this last year, all of this information is based on 2017 data. So, all of the investment that went back into your community in 2017. So, in 2017, we provided support for the Mount Vernon Heritage Days. Additionally, some really exciting things that you guys participate here in your community is energy efficiency. So, energy efficiency programs, excuse me, are available to residential, commercial, and industrial customers within our service area. So, your community is a strong partner for that. As you guys will see, about 159 rebates were claimed this year, but over the last five years, 815 were claimed. Some of the exciting numbers that go along with that, 213,000 kilowatt-hours were saved, but in the last five years, over 1.3 million kilowatt-hours were saved. So, just a little perspective, the 1.3 million kilowatt-hour saved is equivalent to 1.1 million pounds of coal or 114,000 gallons of gasoline consumed. So, just by participating in energy efficiency, your community residents are already being much more aware of what they're consuming. So, that's really exciting for your community as well. In addition, you guys have seen infrastructure investments. Those numbers and infrastructure investments are really to increase reliability within the community. We want to make sure we're providing you a reliable service. So, those dollars are going to create that stronger, reliable service within your community. Lastly, the last thing that I want to mention is other programs that we have available for you guys to participate in. So, again, we mentioned energy efficiency and as well as Alliant Energy Foundation. So, the foundation has three focuses, helping families, education, and then the environment. So, if you guys have any community groups that you know are working within those three focus areas, let us know and we can help them get connected with the Alliant Energy Foundation Director, who can really help them through that application process. That grant cycle opens twice a year, so they have a chance both in the spring and in the fall. So, the other Alliant Energy Foundation is the Hometown Safety Program. The Hometown Safety Program really goes for community safety enhancements. So, this past year, actually in February, we provided a check to the city for AED support. So, that funding can, like I said, go to AEDs, community sirens, personal protective equipment. So, if you guys have a need or if your police or fire department have a need for those, let us know as well. And that grant cycle opens three times a year. We also have our branching out programs, which are programs to add trees to the community. And lastly, we always want to be a partner in economic development or new construction within your community. And that's really a driver from two aspects, both energy efficiency and energy delivery. So, we want to make sure that we can provide incentives where our customer is taking energy efficiency measures, but we also want to make sure that we know from an energy delivery standpoint to make sure that whatever is going into your community, we get service to as that customer needs that service. Do you have any questions on the information presented tonight?
I have just one thing I'm curious about.
Sure.
Under the community participation portion, the total community rebate incentives for 2017 were just short of $55,000.
Yep.
For '13 through '17, it was $528,000.
Yep.
So, quick math tells me that the 2017 was about half of what the annual for those other five years was. Did the incentive program change or did we just not apply for as many as were available or what? And that's putting you on the spot. I mean, I know there's a ton of factors. So, what do you think, speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's all dependent on the project, right? So, we have some rebates. Large rebates only count as one rebate, but that dollar amount is very high. So, it would really depend on what was happening within the community during that point. So, if you guys had something like the community wellness center go up, that number would look a lot different. Or, you know, if any of your, or any of the residents or our customers within the area are doing any large expansions, that number is going to look a lot different than a furnace rebate per se. Does that help answer your question?
So, it sounds like just a couple of things could skew that five-year period number.
Certainly.
Okay, got you. Thank you.
Not a problem.
I was interested in the Hometown Safety Grants and Community Emergency Alert System. Chris, don't we have a budget item this year for some siren communication upgrades?
We're looking at the potential to, we have one siren that was transferred to a solar and we have two others that could potentially. Doug is actually meeting with our emergency manager just to make sure that those changes are necessary first or in the timeframe that we need. Otherwise, yes, we plan to apply. We did get the AED grant.
Yeah. Also, I'm just wondering, Emily, does that sound like the kind of project that might be qualified with this grant?
Certainly. So, our foundation director would be able to help answer that question a lot better than I can, but it absolutely does go towards community sirens or those types of things within your community. And I can certainly get touch base with Chris offline to see kind of what your timeline on that looks like and make sure that I let our community, or our foundation director know that prior to Chris submitting an application or maybe connect them prior to application submission.
That sounds great. And related to our new developments, east side and west side of town, do you know that Alliant has been having communication with the developers of those areas related to, you know, you're talking about economic development or new construction projects on the scale of 260 houses over seven years? I'm just wondering.
Yep, so our operations team, I actually had a conversation with Chris about this back in, I believe, February. And so, we wanted to make sure our operations team got connected with that right away just so we could make sure that as those 270 homes do go up, that we can get them serviced. So, I know that our field engineering staff has worked with the developers to look, just to make sure that we're clear on their timeline. So, again, we want to make sure that their needs are met. So, our operations team has been pretty heavily involved.
So, are there types of energy efficiency rebates, et cetera, that are germane to the context of new construction or residential housing?
There absolutely is. So, commercial new construction, or excuse me, new construction has a commercial program as well as a residential program. So, that residential program, it's typically the developer that goes through that. And our residential energy efficiency team is really in tune with the Home Builders of Iowa Association. So, it's likely that the developer either knows about it or has communicated about it with our team. And sometimes it's just not a fit. So, sometimes it's about, you know, the measures going into the home. And so, sometimes they're not always a fit for everyone, but it's absolutely something that our energy efficiency team knows about as well because I was sure to connect them with that as well. But there is a program for residential new construction.
Great. Any other questions for Emily? All right, well, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your guys' time tonight.
We appreciate your time.
Have a great night. Thank you.
All right, moving along to the consent agenda D, first thing, oh, as a whole, anybody have any concerns over any of the pieces?
I will take a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like demands. Moving on to a public hearing for a resolution amendment in 2017/18 fiscal year budget. And unlike the olden days, I'll just open the public hearing without asking for anybody's permission. Seeing nobody wanted to speak, I will also close it without any express support from the council. It's because you used to have to have an option. All right, that was that. Move on to G, resolutions for approval, 521-2018-A, creating the City of Mount Vernon Public Lordy Position Establishing Qualifying Criteria for Appointment. Chris, do you want to give us any backstory on what's changed after you last talked about this?
So, quite a bit of the criteria actually changed so specific. Specifically, they don't have to be published per se. They have to, must have a Mount Vernon mailing address. I left 16 years of age in there, but I did point out to you that the Mount Vernon area Arts Council did not take a position on that. So, that's completely up to you. And then demonstrated variety proficiency, those are the big criteria that the Arts Council worked. And then the addition of the Mount Vernon Memorial Day event, presentation to the community, and then the Heritage Days. Those three are additions to the resolution. That's what Arts Community wanted to make sure to pull up early, attended. So, for the most part, everything else has kind of stayed the same. Anything else, Steve?
Nope, looked good. Thank you.
Since this is a writing-based resolution, I feel like I need to point out a title. Sorry.
I know you can be the poet, right?
Fair enough. Although you are at least 16 years old, so you're, you know.
You're at least poetic license.
Oh, no. Under where, well, they all start where, that's not helpful. The first number two.
Is that liberation? No.
I don't know what that's. The first number two, develop and present one community presentation slash event. The will should be that, that be on that. Otherwise, with that, I would move approval of Resolution 5-21-2018-A approving the creation of the City of Mount Vernon Public Lordy Position Establishing Qualifying Criteria for Appointment.
I'll second.
Excellent. Move and second, if you have a roll call, please.
West.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
Excellent. Steve, thanks very much to you and M. Back for bringing this together. M. Back.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next G2, Resolutions 521-2018-A, Support and Commitment for the Main Street Program.
I have a question here.
And Chris's note says this is just something we do every two years and support the Main Street Program requirement of the program. I would also look for confirmation that we've already made commitments, but there are.
Yeah, we have.
Any other additional comments you think?
No, just that the, by adopting the resolution, you also adopt the agreement kind of by proxy. So, I just wanted to point that out, but this is a requirement that we do every two years.
Obviously, I'm familiar with this, but having not seen the prior agreement, is there anything substantially different in this one?
No.
Just the date.
So, speaking of the dates, I know we do this every two years, but the dates, both in your front page memo there and then within the document itself, go July 1, 2018, through December 3rd of August.
I noticed that as well. And the last agreement did as well.
Okay, so we do it every two years, but only for 18 months?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. And as long as that's what we're doing, that's what we're doing.
I saw the same thing.
Okay.
That would be Main Street Iowa.
Any other questions?
Just going to make a motion to approve the Resolution 5-21-2018-B.
I would second.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Rose.
Yes.
Weisler.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
Thank you. And G3, Resolution related to mandatory transfers for fiscal year 2017/18. Chris, quick back story?
So, we have to have our transfers completed by June. We're hoping that this will be the last transfer, as I was just going to run to you. But starting from the bottom, the TIP and lost one, those are, I don't want to call them cleanup, but they're going to the community center, trying to get them all into one fund. Road use tax, we did spend a little bit more on the vehicle, equipping our purchase. So, we have two negative balances of $3,500 we're moving from both sewer and road use tax to cover those two negative balances. And then employee benefits and law emergency, this is one that we do every year, taking tax money from that specific client item. We move it, obviously, to the general fund. And then sewer debt service, it's because we're paying payments out of that, so.
But the, so the benefit, the employee benefit and the law emergency, are those annual transfers, quarterly transfers?
Typically, we try to do them annually. So, we know, we get taxes twice a year to the tax allocations from the city.
And that comes from county.
County, I mean.
Yeah, every month it comes.
We try to do that once a year just so that we get a customer to do.
And I have questions about the bond too. So, that lost one transfer, is that essentially clearing out that entire account?
Lost one, yes.
The first account, the lost one.
We've been spending funds for the architects out of lost one since, but it's now time to.
So, that's the one that back in the day started at like 450?
Yep.
And we've, okay, got you.
Yeah, both the ones have our extension.
Right.
Unfortunately. And the TIP one, that big chunk, can you just describe?
So, the expectation was, we weren't sure moving into the budget, since TIP is a year behind, we actually allocated for our potential bond payment should we, or had we borrowed funds in this fiscal year. So, because we allocate TIP in December, we needed to make sure. So, theoretically now, even if we borrow in fiscal year, we could make an immediate payment if we needed to.
Very good. Are there any other questions related to this resolution?
With that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 5-21-2018-C.
I'll second.
Move and second, roll call, please.
Weisler.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Brown Bush.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Christiansen.
Yes.
Very good. Moving on to, I think, Mayor, Preparation, Nothing, or Business, Nothing, Motion for Approval, Consideration of Claims List. Questions about those in the fact and those here in the paper?
I'm making motion to approve the claims list for May 1st, 2018. Second.
Second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. And next consideration, Public Manager Position, or Program Application for Nick. Chris?
So, Nick was hired Public Works Director, came from the private sector. There are some subtle differences, obviously, from the private to the public sector. So, I really kind of pushed him to get involved with APWA, which is the Iowa Association of Public Works Employees. He's since met individuals like Brett Haddie from West Des Moines, who kind of encouraged him, if you really want to start up here in public sector, that this is kind of a step in between, I think, going and actually getting a degree, but really familiarizing yourself with bond capabilities, some of the information that we deal with on a daily basis. I was familiar with the Certified Public Manager Program as I researched it earlier in my career, but it's a partnership between the State of Iowa and Drake University. But it is a big commitment. It's 18 months. You do have to travel to Des Moines once a month. So, he and I have kind of been discussing this for the last year, whether or not he thought he would be able to commit, family commitments, so on and so forth. So, we're at that point now, where we'd like to get started in August. We have Eldon on board who can help run the show while he's gone for the two or three days each month. So, we're working, we have a finalized contract agreement to borrow from the police department as far as should he leave employment prior to year four. It's a stare set down 25% each year. So, he would have to repay the amount for the agreement. But again, it's a really good program. Some excellent employees across the state have gone through it. I would be excited to get him into it, more kind of making sure that the commitment himself was ready to go. So, next year, if you have any questions specifically for him, but I'll answer any question you might have on the program.
So, the travel costs per mileage for a hotel, a permanent stay, that's all covered in your current budget?
Correct.
So, you mentioned you have a cost of the class. Do you also have a cost estimate for traffic through the new areas?
We typically have $30 or $40 a day, finally it's gone, as far as food allocated. Some of it will be provided through the class, and then hotel stays for two nights once a month.
Do you have a cost estimate for the prior year?
Luckily, for all you two months, I do.
But you're confident the budget can handle it? Nick, do you have something to share?
I just, I have no intentions of staying in a hotel because the class is over at 4:30. So, it's roughly a two-hour trip. So, just grab back and attend. Except it does go through the winter months, so it could be a little iffy there. On the hotel pause.
Take a blow.
No intentions of staying.
Take a blow. Oh, my God. I'm just.
Oh, my God.
Any questions? If not, anything to move?
I would move approval of Nick's participation in the city's support of that in the Certified Public Manager Program.
I'll second.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed as he goes. Thank you. Moving on to Discussion and Consideration, Master Subscription Agreement with Iowa Interactive. Chris, what's that about?
Credit card payments.
That's big.
So, Sue has done a wonderful job of going through the process of coming up with a credit card company that we felt we wanted to present to you. Iowa Interactive is an Iowa-based company. All of the fees, generally speaking, were in the same ballpark. They might differ by a percent or something like that, 50 cents for a transaction. Those get transferred over to you as a convenience fee to those using it. But very excited, everybody that Sue spoke to that is currently using Iowa Interactive is happy with their service. The city attorney has gone through their contract and had one question as it related to us notifying them about advertising. Just sprung out a little bit. We got that answer back today and they're happy with Iowa Interactive's, Interactive as well. Sue verified today, we'll be able to take payments over the phone, buy a credit card now as well. So, you don't have to stop in to actually make a credit card payment, call in. So, hopefully, new services can be for everybody involved.
So, I'm curious, is this something we can embed into webpages for the city? Or do we have, you know, do they have an interface that people can go to and say, "I want to pay my Mount Vernon bills here online"? Or is this purely telephone or in-person?
Right now, it's purely telephone and in-person. We could explore. So, we also use PayPal for parks and recs. So, we're wanting to get this initiated so that we were sure that this is the company that we want to work with. And then, yeah, looking at exploring our options once we get it put in.
And this is a weird question, but because of my work history, I'll ask it. Is there any information related to the credit card, the person's name, et cetera, et cetera, that's stored electronically here within the city? Or are you just entering data into? Or are you just entering data into an interface provided by the certified?
Entering data into an interface, so my understanding, even though I will suggest that we will reach out to ICAP to increase our insurance threshold for that very purpose, nothing gets stored on our server.
Okay, so it's, I mean, the thing I'm thinking about is PCI compliance.
Yes.
So they don't have much.
No, that was the one question I wanted to make sure that we weren't responsible for that data, because we didn't want to be responsible should malware or ransomware attack, extended by knowledge of those. That was my whole role moving forward, was that we did not, we were not responsible. But we will recommend and talk to ICAP before it goes online to make sure that we do increase our insurance for that purpose, just in case we are sued.
Yeah.
Does the interface allow for, once you, you know, if I pay my January bill, February shows up, do I need to then re-give my credit card info, or do I have an account?
It definitely hasn't been stored.
Okay.
So, a couple things, I'm just thinking from the perspective of your time with the people in the office, I would really love to see you guys look into further pulling this into a web-oriented system, so that the end user, you know, as a user of the water system, or Parks and Rec, or whatever, I can enter my own information in. Because the more time that you guys are taking on calls for that stuff, and then when there's problems going through, you know, it's not necessarily.
I don't think it necessarily is a question per se of the credit card company, it's not just the financial package that we currently have, which would cause us to upgrade our system. So we have a very basic financial software, all of which, like I said, kind of baby steps getting into this, and we'll continue to explore options, because we'll likely have to expand that with the community.
So I guess then we just need to make sure that this is scalable.
Yeah, I think, like I said, there are much larger communities using Iowa Interactive, and probably to a degree, much increased beyond ours, but yeah, our initial goal is to take credit card payments, see how frequently they were used, we're assuming obviously that they'll be used rather frequently. But expanding the program, we wanted to get it in place well before the Community Wellness Center were to open up, because we know that once that building gets moving and it opens, that credit card payments will be even more crucial. So this kind of allows us to take this for your test drive and make sure that's what we're.
So just, I was just gonna say, just another comment coming from my software marketing background, we're kind of being coached that as we move transactions, I mean, we as consumers, as we move transactions online and use credit cards, typically more often than not, we're actually saving money by doing that. In this case, I know we're gonna pass off the transaction fee to the end user, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask them to pay a little bit more, and I'm okay with that, you know, we don't necessarily need to have the city covering all that right now, but just be aware that, for example, when I pay my Progressive Progressive Insurance bill, when I opt to do that as an ACH and to make it an auto withdraw, I'm saving like six bucks a month. And that's something that more and more companies are doing, and so I'm just saying, you might hear something from people saying, well, why do I have to pay more to do this?
And initially, I think, because we're just starting is the reason that we wanted to really push it back on the consumer first, but yes.
I'm not saying it's wrong, I just want to make you aware that.
Once we get the analytical data from how many users we have, how many transactions we're doing, then I think we can better make our recommendation to you whether or not we just incorporate that into the cost of the water sewer and the garbage fees.
Yeah, well, the other part of that, though, is the paperless billing, right? There's no mailing fees or printing fees, or time to stuff envelopes, that's where the savings are.
Yes.
We're still doing paper billing, but only the second half is electronic, so I think that's, paperless billing is a whole different dimension.
Right.
Well, what I wanted to ask about was ACH or electronic check payment options, you know, because, I mean, I don't really like to use credit cards for payment, I think a lot of people do ACH.
If I write it where it's in here, if a check or ACH is.
Oh, it is included, yeah.
Somehow I already have that with the city, is that a thing?
You set up with an automatic withdrawal with your bank, this, I believe, will allow the, just put your routing number here, so this is it.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily be an automatic withdrawal?
No.
You could on a monthly basis decide whether you're gonna use your cards?
Yes.
Or your check?
Right.
Okay, I gotcha.
That's excellent. But I'm sorry, I didn't read all of your shit.
So thanks for your work on this, you guys, I realize this is no small thing, and I think people need, we need to have it up.
Well, I won't take any credit other than I told Sue to go start researching.
You made an authority, that's.
When you send these bills out, will they have both check, cash, that's your payment, and then the fee if you paid by, that's good because some people might call you up and say, I'm ready to pay this, oh, that would be an extra three dollars and twenty-two cents.
It won't be, but it won't be on the bill, the fees will come up and then it'll give you an opportunity to say, yes, I want to continue with this. So you have an opportunity to stop.
I'd recommend putting on a bill to the opposite of that.
The only problem with the.
You've got some elderly people that don't really.
Because it's a percentage basis, it doesn't get calculated, I mean, it's not in our financial package to.
You can't put that in this?
We can check with them, we have an extremely basic version.
Because that would be nice to have, this is cash, this is check, and this is the extra, and this is if you pay.
Yeah, I mean, the program, the credit card, well, when you pay by credit card, it'll take you all the way through, calculate what your payment is with that, and then say, do you want to continue with this operation? And then you have to click yes. You're able to opt out if you don't want to pay the fee. But I would have to reach out to the financial segment, like I said, most, we have about the most basic version you can buy. Again, looking to increase that, now it's a budgetary issue, so we continue to have that discussion as well.
So this wouldn't allow a person to make the payment through their own online banking?
Do they have to call us?
Well, because I heard, you know, we need to have it physically, or they call, I mean, the numbers, but like I said, I didn't need to find, I'd see ACH was involved, but if it does, if the services from them include ACH, then you would think somehow a person could make a payment from their online banking to the city of Mount Vernon, and it would go through bank channels into this company's accounting, their processing.
If you do the monthly, we already have that established.
Oh, okay.
So like, for instance, yours.
Sorry, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so you can, you can sign up for monthly withdrawals already.
Okay.
No, that's okay.
I didn't know about that either.
I write checks for everything.
No, you can.
The mention of checks is in the fees section.
So some, I think, the only thing that tends to hold people back from doing the automatic withdrawals is the link between the, the automatic withdrawals.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so.
I'm a little drove, but where are you at?
We do have quite a few people that do utilize that service.
That's why, that's why you paper bill and write checks, I want to know.
All right. The influx of new citizens coming to the community too, and it becomes the definition of what's considered basic services. We've had the discussion about internet speeds, you know, up and down, but this might be a minimum expectation too, and this may not be the final version of this credit card program, but at least it gets us in the, in the, with the ball, yeah, so.
That's why, of course, you know, hardly a factor for the research. All right, so Chris, you're looking for a vote on this, because it's a very good contract?
Correct.
Any other questions coming in?
Am I right that, I mean, there's no charge to the city for the initiation of services, right? Which is the pass-through on the fees?
We buy the car readers, we purchase certain equipment, but the fee is, like I said, there are recouped transactions.
And there's no setup charge, I saw, or, okay.
Is there a motion?
With that, I would move approval of the contract between City of Mount Vernon and Iowa Interactive.
A second.
Second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yes, thank you. All right. Moving on to special consideration, opposing ladder testing contract with fire cats. Nate, you want to come up and give us your perspective? You took your time to come here and hang out with us.
You bet, you know, I didn't get my two minutes of talking, so. Councilmember, this you're looking at, a, I'd like to enter into as a three-year contract with this company, and allow, contract with them to host test every piece of hose we have, as well as all of our ladders that we carry, that we have in stock. What this is gonna give us is keep us in line with what our ISO audit just came up with in identifying these, we have been doing this in the past, it's not been as successful as what this contract will be, just because we've been trying to chip away at host testing eight thousand feet hose on a nightly basis, or Monday, Monday night when we've got nothing going on. So it's, it is very labor-intensive and time-consuming to sit there and to complete this. There's several communities around just our area, I know Soul, North Liberty, there's several on Fairfax, I think there's a couple other communities, they're looking at contracting with this company as well to complete this, but it's a one-stop shop, they come in, they would pull everything off, hose, test everything, actually barcode every piece of hose and put it back on, so there's accountability with that too. A very streamlined system for us, so. I guess if there's any questions, like I said, it's, it's one of the biggest perks for us, it's gonna take a lot of volunteer hours, it's been, you know, something pretty mine up the time consuming, to be able to put that, something that's more worthwhile.
And is this price just for the entire three years?
I believe that's an annual price, yeah, it'd be, what are you looking at?
The price in red is an annual price, should we lock it to a three-year deal?
Yes, I'm sorry, should I clarify that too?
Hence why we put the contract, so this is an amount, dollar amount, that I can actually approve, but since it was going to be a three-year period potentially, wanted to at least bring it in front of the council to make you aware of it.
So Nate, how do you feel about trying it out for a year versus committing to three years right now, with your personal, sure, your opinion?
I guess, having a really, really good working relationship with Soul, and they've had very good luck with them, and they've been using it for, I think, ten-plus years, and had, had no issues with them, so I guess the, the cost savings was my biggest thing always, you know, that's always a perk of saving, that kind of, that kind of a contract price, so I guess I wouldn't be opposed to trying it out for a year as well.
And which of these options, it says options one, two, and three, with different pricing, so I'm guessing you have a favorite amongst those?
Yeah, essentially, we're looking at option one for the host testing portion, and then the option three for the ground ladder testing.
One and three.
Yeah. We provide all the, like I said, they come in, we, basically it's hands-off for us, they come in and take care of everything.
And if I read this correctly, there isn't, do we have backups in place so that while they're testing set of hoses A, we've got set of hoses B, that if something were to happen?
Yeah.
We're able to respond if we need to?
Yes, due to the redundancy that we have, they would, they would just do one piece of apparatus, one vehicle at a time, so it would deplete everything.
Gotcha.
And that's what they said, they're very, most of the individuals that work long are full-time firefighters in Detroit, so they, they understand the words of what they're and how it operates.
And as an operational cost, from what I remember, I would expect that the RFD might participate in funding this, is that true?
Potentially, yes, but keep in mind that we're trying to move to a contract basis with them as well, so.
Right, but as it stands, were we to approve this and engage with this company, let's say, next month?
It was, I believe, I, I believe it was in the budget that I submitted to council and the rural fire district, anticipating this, this next fiscal, fiscal year, whether it was quite to that amount, I think it actually might have been, they might, might have approved a little bit more than what was actually submitted in contrast.
So it sounds like you believe the RFD would participate in this cost?
Yes, not to speak for them, but yes, I'm sure they would have an issue with it.
Usually, anything that involves equipment that they would utilize as well, but it's only specifically with one or the other.
Yeah, I was, so we separated the ownership of the facility, and they were paying rent, did we also do the same with the equipment?
No, that's actually.
And is that still shared, right?
That is the last part of the potential contract, we had to inventory everything in the building.
Right, so, yeah, that's, I remember hearing that. So once we get that resolved, then we would move, their operational cost sharing would be through a contractual.
That's the hope, yes.
Yes, that's the target. What was the ballpark time line for that shift, a year?
Well, the inventory is done, so, you know, it could be as quick as two to three months, depending on the language of the agreement from the attorney. Could be a year, depending on how back and forth the attorneys get into the actual.
And so if we agree to this right now, you know, if that weren't to happen, and we believe they shared the cost, if we agree to this and that separation does happen, we just pull these costs into whatever we come up with for ongoing contractual, right? Sounds good.
Nate, if I remember correctly, having the hydrants pressure tested, somehow fed into insurance rates locally, like we had a number four rating, if I remember, out of six, something like that?
Out of ten, yeah.
Out of ten, okay. Does this play into that in any way, or is this mostly equipment agents just making sure that we're up to?
Yeah, that was, yes, this will, this will tie into that, that audit that we had done through the insurance hands-off, so yes, they, they look at annual host testing, annual ladder testing, and credit us points for completing that. Like I said, this just gives them, other than just an Excel spreadsheet for us, it gives them identifying every piece of hose, article, I mean, a lot more fluid.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be wonderful.
Well, I'd make a motion for option one and three, because option one would more than pay for number three, it saves things.
I would second that.
Second in all favor?
Aye.
Close? Ms. Anas, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And it's our last motion, swift consideration, Lions Club requests to pick the gazebo. Is there anyone, Lions Club here to speak?
No, actually, Councilperson West informed me that they had reached out to her regarding this request. It was interesting that we received a phone call from another concerned citizen today about whether they're getting painted this summer. So, yes. The only thing that we were told to remember is that there are chairs underneath that probably need to be moved out before painting occurs, and we need to try and avoid Tuesday, so, or Monday, so, is it Tuesday?
Tuesday's the music.
Yes, so try to maybe start on a Wednesday and let it cure throughout the meat before the next Tuesday contest, so that we don't interfere.
Couple notes on the gazebo, since I spent some time there recently, hanging out with teenagers, joke. Yeah, I noticed that one of the lenses from one of the lights up in this ceiling had fallen out, it's frack, it's kind of twisted and bent. And also, since I look out upon the park from my bed porch at night often, the lights are often on, I was kind of like, oftentimes the lights are left on, and, no, I'm probably not, but, and, and when I was over there in the daytime, it was switched on, and I was like, that's bizarre, I mean, there's just a switch right there that you can turn on and off easily, so there's like an energy savings thing, and just a little maintenance thing.
We actually had that discussion today, Nick, and. We actually had that discussion today, Nick and Matt and I, about some maintenance-related items that need to be done at all the parks. And so we've received our first two payments from the franchise fee. I don't want to spend a lot of it because we still have the culvert and the bridge to do, however, there's some electrical work that needs to be done at parks. And so the goal was, before the next meeting, the first meeting in Jan, is for them to itemize a list and prioritize some of those items, and then bring them to you and talk about the potential spending of, so we have twenty-nine thousand dollars, we're just shy of twenty-nine thousand dollars, so, forthcoming at the next meeting.
Okay, well, and so the reason I want to bring that, because I thought if you were going to do any kind of electrical changes, equipment changes up inside there, you might want to do it after the painting is done, you know, that there might be some project coordination, that's, that's why I just wanted to.
And assuming that they're just going to paint the back the colors that are covered there, but it does need to be painted.
Yeah, and I frankly didn't realize it as much, when I walked by a new night, after we had that discussion, the floor is really bad.
Yes.
Yeah. You don't see it from the sides, but when you're looking straight on.
Yeah, the floor I looked at today actually is probably about fifty-fifty maybe at best.
Yeah, so, anyway, I thought it was great, Paul Feebate contacted me, he's on the board of Lions Club, and it's, you know, he wanted to run it by us to get approval before they go and buy materials. So it's their intention to pay for the, the paint, and if not all Lions Club people, they'll, they'll also get other people to help, but they're going to be in charge of all that project. We don't have to have city workers involved, but doing that, we just need to know, as you were saying, what the parameters were.
Just scheduling with Nick, and then every volunteer has to sign the waiver, and talk about it.
So should I put him in contact with Nick if we have a role in agreement and pass that, okay.
And you're looking for a motion on this?
Yes.
I would move allowing the Lions Club, encouraging the Lions Club to repaint the gazebo.
I second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very much, I was just wanting to mention the stroboscopic light out there in the park also seems to either fix itself or somebody fixed it, I appreciate that.
You have a disco light?
Yeah, it's crazy.
Stroboscopic.
Oh, yeah.
And somehow she said disco, I know what she's saying.
I made a sneeze there.
Public Works has been extremely busy, so.
Yeah. All right, next up, we have the three standard reports, and as is current practice, upper police report, does council have any questions for you regarding this report? No questions? Very good, thank you for a nice report.
We had the early response on the K nine program.
Early response?
Yeah, on the fundraising?
We are plugging away. You're, some of the guys are very stressed out right now about the first annual golf outing, trying to get all the work organized, because they've never organized a golf outing before. So getting their ducks in a row for that. Things are going, we've been in touch with Josh from K nine tactical, and received some pictures again the other day, that his training is going well and stuff like that too, so. Fundraising is plugging away, donations are starting to trickle in, we just sent a letter out this week to all the businesses, letting them know about the golf outing and different fundraising, or different ways they could partner with the project if they choose to, so it's going good.
My youngest appreciated the choppalock of monster.
That was fun. Steve's kids did too, he was, they were torn away. They learned a few things, that was good. Thank you.
All right, and Public Works reporting questions for Nick, concerns? Accolades? I'm just gonna say Nick's awesome. All right, moving on to Parks and the Rack, anything people would like to ask of Matt? Show just a time.
Everything cool with the pool?
Ooh, that line.
I'm sorry.
The fact that it rhymes was the coolest thing about the floor this time.
The pool is cool.
Yeah, as far as some staff trainings and everything's operating great, Nick can probably speak more to the mechanics or the operations of the pumps and everything else, but, yeah, I mean, staff has been in the pool, chemicals are good. We've ordered chemicals to start the season, heater's on. Eighty degrees yesterday.
Eighty, eighty degrees.
The pool water is eighty degrees, wow, amazing.
It's good or bad, I don't know, but.
Fifty-sixty-five if it was regular.
It's good for the swimmers.
Ohioan was here earlier. Ohioan was here earlier.
Any rebates?
I don't think they're energy efficient.
Yeah, so, sorry, to your report, yeah, pool is good, if you have any questions specifically about mechanically, Nick can answer that.
So, given the weather, Saturday's still an open day?
Yeah, Saturday's open day, it looks like it's going to be warm this weekend, so we're hoping to be rock and roll, and then it's going to spike down. Early June always does that to us, where it gets a little chilly, but.
Are your permit sales tracking to your annual trends?
Uh, we're a little low right now on swim passes, but I think really the early spring, or in the late spring is really not putting people into the mode or the season. And the late school year as well is really, I think, kind of related a little bit to that, so, we're not far off, but we're still a little, a little behind right now, just to be honest with you. The swim lessons are, are right on track, if not above, so it's kind of catch point too.
One thing that was brought up to me, I guess, we use the track area.
For soccer?
For soccer and that, and there's signs all around that you're not supposed to bring dogs onto that area, and people bringing dogs on that area, that was a concern that was brought up. And also, there's a cover that goes over the sand pit, and the parents with their little kids, they've been taking it off and allowing their kids to play in there, and that's, it was brought up too.
Nobody has brought that to my attention, so. Yeah, I, you are, appreciate that, I didn't know anything, during the season, I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, that's just something that.
And that's, as you all know, that's a temporary fix right now, I mean, our spring soccer, we plan on moving it out to the area of Elliott Park that we purchased. It's just a temporary fix right now, we can relieve the pressure on those baseball fields right now and get those used, so.
And are we anticipating that, a new area coming online for next season, or is that?
I don't, I don't foresee it, unless you want to help me out with that.
Forty-one thousand dollars with the ratings.
Fair enough, all right.
Well, it doesn't have to stop there.
As long as it's forty-one, all right.
It will be on the list that I've asked these to put together, however, from a priori standpoint, yeah, it probably won't be, high on the list. We, we are trying to think outside of the box, we've talked about potentially running our own gozer for a couple of months, and do some of that work internally. Right now, it doesn't bode well just because we've been so busy and, uh, so we've been trying to think outside of the box a little bit to come up with some solutions, so.
I did not anticipate next year being out there, obviously, so next year or two, you know.
I forgot about the grading.
Yeah.
While you're up here, just another fantastic job, both to you and the rest of the Choppalock committee, as well as Nick and your guys in getting everything set up.
Thank you, it was, it was quite the event.
In chief with security and whatnot.
Just routed, yeah.
They're routed, so, yeah, but thanks, it was just a great event, and again.
It just keeps getting better and better.
Thanks very much, Matt.
Thank you.
All right, we got nothing in the discussion, reports starting with, so my printed copy has a strike, is the first one mayor?
Mayor.
Yeah, I've got nothing. Two councils, council, anything? I'm, I'm going to offer up just a little more detail in what I think Chris made in a recent communication about Housing Commission. Housing Commission agreed to split up into three subcommittees as a way to help sort of increase engagement by participants in terms of the, the things that they have passion about, and also to help us more easily focus on some things where we can get the ball rolling. And, and I think that's a really good thing, I'm excited about that. So I'll just throw that out there. Housing Commission.
Do you remember what the subcommittees were?
Yes, I can think of at least two, and I got, they're going to come to me. First one is sort of traditional affordable housing, Hellamite Housing. The next one is called Market Housing, which means addressing housing needs across the spectrum of housing types and costs. And sort of, sort of figuring out where the gaps in our supply are relative to the demand overall. And then the third one, I think, is, is focused on senior housing, which is long been recognized as one of our gaps. It also overlaps with the other two a little bit, but it's significant enough that it's worthy of isolation in the city. So, excited about that, I'm, I'm excited about all three of those, really most importantly, the Hellamite and the Senior personally, just because of my own historical observations about these in the city. Any committee reports that, I guess was kind of a committee? All right, and on to Chris, you missed anything?
Matt, I talked about the pool, opening May twenty-sixth. We had, my nine-to-eleven solicitor licenses has probably grown by another six or seven on top of that, so I'd say there's probably somewhere around twenty. They should be able to show a laminated city permit, if they do not, then they should not be soliciting, so. We have, as I reported to the council, the city is only issuing permits, that means they've bonded and have the insurance requirements, we're not endorsing anyone. We're still encouraging you to call your own insurance adjuster, careful about signing any paperwork that you get. They are calling up and, you know, basically stating we'll be there to do an appointment, they're, I won't say they're pushy, but they're, they definitely know what they're doing.
I also wanted to add to that, we've had two complaints, one actually was directly with me, where they were representing themselves as knowing a local person, and using that person's name, we had a complaint today from one of our local business owners where they were passing his name as being a recommendation or something from that standpoint, which is not the case, so. As Chris said, you know, strongly encouraging the permit, looking for that permit first, but then doing your own homework as well beyond that, because we're starting, they are pushy, sometimes we've had reports of them being on the road before even talking with the homeowners as well.
So what methods do we have to, to make citizens aware of these things, other than us speaking on camera here tonight? I have looked at, we have abuse on city council meetings, and it's not as high as we would like.
Tuesday, I put it out on social media through the Facebook page, and it got over eight thousand views on that, and like the discussions that went from there. And I know that was shared, we were starting to see some of the impact of that, so Tuesday, we were getting, is when they all kind of arrived, and then we were chasing them. The police department was going door-to-door, getting complaints about them soliciting, we put it out on Facebook requiring the permit process, and by Wednesday, we were starting, and, and these guys will acknowledge that, the word was getting out that they needed to get the permits, because they were coming to city hall Wednesday and Thursday, they were inundated up here for the permit process.
I, I can tell you that it has presented some, or other solicitors license. So chances are we'll be viewing that as a, as a whole. High walk, that probably has a more expensive permitting process, and it's a little bit easier to follow for both staff and those seeking soldiers, but. That was the end of that, but we had people here at eight o'clock, and the hailstorm was just after seven, so.
Did we incur any damage?
No.
Nothing, the police cruisers weren't nailed, or?
We heard the little ones start, and we pulled them into the garage quickly.
Jeff?
Yeah, so we really.
I mean, lynch for every one of their cars, he just denied.
My personal car.
I mean, it's just sad, a lot of love, you know, you got it?
Yeah.
All of them on the streets, I'm glad I got all my cars that signed, yeah.
How about our solar panels?
Have they?
No, they're fine, Red Lion, they actually called this week, and he'll come out and verify, but they're designed.
With standard circuitry.
So. He didn't seem all that concerned. The last thing I would say is, we're still working with OPM to try and finalize the square footage, we're trying to move rooftop units to make, take advantage of the, the footprint that we've got. Fundraising has exceeded our wildest dreams at this point, but we're close to almost eight-point-four million dollars in funds.
You didn't update that before?
I didn't, uh, I just got it, I just got the update today, and another ten-thousand-dollar donation was called about today, so there's another twenty-thousand dollars on top of this one, so.
Remind me of our date limit for the other match, it's July sixteenth?
The Dave Van Meter? Oh, July fourth.
Approaches. And you note the construction progress here, dirt moving quickly and something.
Yes, um, film book is actually working more so on the north end, and they're gonna actually do some more street work than what we had originally anticipated, which is good. The more connectivity that we can get out there, the better. So, the water project on Spring Meadows was supposed to take place today on Candlestick, it got moved to tomorrow, but everybody's received door hangers and notices.
You said connecting, make the water in from our supply.
Actually, there's a, a storm steward that had to go in, so they're gonna cut the pipe, water pipe, and actually kind of make an angle underneath the, the new storm, so. It's within Candlestick, or that development on Candlestick, that that may need to take place, but it's supposed to be one day tomorrow, so hopefully everything runs fairly soon.
Excellent, and so they're, they're working on the sewers for just the first phase area, yes?
Yes.
That's roughly what, twenty percent, twenty-five percent?
Um, Spring Meadow heights is probably a little over twenty percent, and depending on if Bryce and his investors decide to go all the way up into the cul-de-sac, that is probably closer to twenty-five percent as well, so.
All right. That's your report then, Chris?
Yes.
Okay, well, seeing no further business, I call the end of the turn.